All right, we are back once again at 7:00 PM. And I'm going to call another public hearing to order. And this one has it read, "A public hearing on January 16, 2023, at 7:00 PM, to Newton Town Hall Road and via Zoom video conferencing. In accordance with RSA 32-5, notice is hereby given to residents of Newton, New Hampshire, that a public hearing for the purpose of gathering public input on the proposed 2023 town budget and warrant articles will be held on Monday, January 16, 2023, at the Newton Town Hall, starting at 7:00 PM. Snow date, which we almost needed, is Tuesday, January 17, 2023. The public is encouraged to attend." So being consistent, it refers it there with SB 2. We have our town meeting is in a couple of different pieces, and I keep forgetting the date, but February 4th? For the deliberative.
Deliberative, yes.
So this is our public hearing on the budget and warrant articles will then be presented at the deliberative on February 4th. It'll be March, what do we?
14th.
14th.
It's the election day.
For the election. So what we're going to do, and we're going to try to do this as smoothly as possible, is we'll present our draft. You can see them, for those in the room who have one. And Diane also put it online. For those at home, it says "draft" on here, right? Big letters, "draft." So before we start in on this, I'll say it, I'll probably say it 100 times tonight. This is a very tough economic environment we're all living in right now. I think everybody knows that. It's tough at everybody's house, at everybody's jobs, and it's not any easier here. And I, you know, I'm not just saying this, but I'll start off. I appreciate the department heads for all the work they've put into this. We start in like late October reviewing these budgets, and they start before that, right? And we go through these every meeting, and we parse them, and we look for opportu-- they look for the opportunities first, then we look for opportunities. And, you know, it's the summary, right? It's electricity, it's heating oil, it's salary and wages, it's sand and salt. It's all this stuff that has just skyrocketed in price. And you see it at your house. I had an electric bill come a couple of weeks ago. I left it on the counter for a few days. I didn't want to look at it. But I eventually had to look at it. I had to pay for it. And unfortunately, maybe we get some relief at the end of 2023. But this budget is reflective of what everybody is encountering. So I'm going to read the warrant, and we'll go around the horn here. "Town warrant 2023. The state of New Hampshire, the polls will be opening from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM to the inhabitants of the town of Newton, New Hampshire, in the county of Rockingham, and said state qualified to vote in town affairs. You are hereby notified to meet for the first session of the annual meeting, which shall be for the explanation, discussion, and debate of each warrant article in the transaction of all business, other than voting by official ballot, to be held at the Newton Town Hall on Saturday, February 4, 2023, at 9:00 AM. The second session to be held at the Newton Fire Station, 8D Merrimack Road, in said Newton on Tuesday, the 14th day of March next, at 8:00 in the forenoon, to choose all necessary town officers for the ensuing year by official ballot and to vote on all the issues before the town of Newton on the official ballot. The polls to be open at 8:00 in the forenoon and to close not earlier than 8:00 in the evening." So number one will be to elect all necessary town officers for the ensuing year, which will be the ballot, and the town clerk will have information on that going out very shortly. But number two on the warrant is, "Shall the town of Newton raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $4,415,786.0, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town of Newton or by law or the governing body, may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 401310 to tap up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated budget increase from the 2020 actual budget to the 2023 proposed budget represents a tax impact increase of $1,213 per $1,000 of assessed value. Default budget would result in an estimated tax impact increase of .636 per $1,000 of assessed value." Okay, before we vote, open for discussion. Diane, go ahead.
So just a quick one. The highway budget has been updated. We just got the bill for Comcast and the Internet service, so we had to add that in there. So it is that change in the class that the board would accept that change into the proposed, which is probably in.
Okay. So you're saying you need a motion to accept that change? No?
It's either proposed motion, I believe.
No, thanks, not on the one in front of me.
How much money is that?
It was $2,400,000.
Well--
Move to accept the proposed updated 2023 Highway Department budget for inclusion in the proposed 2023 town operating budget.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Segmented by Charlie. Roll call, Charlie.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike, are you on again? Not yet.
Wait a minute, Matt, we're voting on the whole budget?
No, no.
Sorry, I was on mute. Madam, an aye.
That's an aye. So this is just that one motion--
Right. To include it in the budget.
That's unanimous. Stick with the back-to-the-public comment portion of this.
Yep.
Trish, did you have something?
This is probably out of order, but this is housekeeping. For anyone that picked up the worksheet that's over there, it's just the odd number pages. There's no even number pages. So in case you're missing, which is how I noticed I was missing part of my conservation, so just so that you know that--
Some of mine.
Okay. Mine isn't. Okay.
The one at the bottom of the--
The one?
That's what I went up there and looked for.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to save money for the town, so any way we can.
One side, the bottom, and the two side. The two-sided ones are everything.
Oh, thank you.
Cool. Was that it, Trish?
That's it.
Roger?
I've got a question. I didn't attend the hearings when the budgets were proposed. So on line 84, which is the emergency management, the salary goes up four times. And I realize that, you know, there is a lot more work that is being done in emergency management now than there was before. But my question is, are you budgeting to pay for the salary of the person who has been suspended with pay?
And I believe that is not-- Trish, did you want to talk to this? You mentioned this at the, when you presented it to us.
I just had a question we had, because I was looking at my form.
Basically, the salary line for emergency management--
Yes.
Is that increase there because they're budgeting for paying for not only the work that you do, but also the suspended person?
Yes.
So my question to the selectmen is--
Proposed budget.
The proposed budget, are you proposing to basically pay for the whole year?
So, to explain, typically, we would be-- of course, we have an emergency. It's a little different now. But we would be both working various amount of hours. So although there's a certain amount that has been approved with the attorneys and the Board of Selectmen, that amount could even be more when the EMD comes back. It could be less. It depends on what's going on in the department. So what I did was, I took the amount of money that we averaged, both of us, throughout the year to come up with a salary item. Sometimes it could be more than that. Sometimes it might be less. But that's how I came up with that average. Roughly 20 to 25 hours a week each, whether or not he's here or not.
So you're saying that if he were present--
Mm-hmm.
--and working, that there would be 40 hours' worth of work being done? But, and how much work are you doing now, then?
So, yes. So, let me use the mic. So depending, again, Larry did a lot of the background stuff, a lot of research and grant stuff. I probably did a lot of the paperwork stuff, the filing, the grants. A lot of times, he would be working and I wouldn't. So it could be when he comes back, I'm going-- you may see my hours less. But because I don't have a crystal ball, I had to take an average of both of us to come up with a salary item for the-- a line item for the year.
So basically, you are budgeting to carry someone on--
Well, we have to right now.
Yeah, but that's just what I wanted clarification on.
Any other questions on the budget so far? Any of, not to put you guys on the spot, we got a couple of department heads. Did you want to just give a couple of minutes on, you know, support of your budget as to the work you put into it and whatnot? Anybody? Don't everybody jump up at the same time, so. You don't have to, but-- Chief Jewitt, thank you.
Evening, Board. Mike Jewitt, please, chief. I don't think you're looking for me to go through my proposed budget right now, but in general, you know, we've at least done what we could this year to minimize the cost of the budget going up. As the chairman said earlier, the, you know, everybody's feeling it, and we know that. So we're trying to do our best to keep the budget down on our end. You know, and it's hard, because we're still trying to offer the same services 24/7, and we're out there. But the cost of doing business goes up. It seems like it's daily going up. With fuel prices and different things, the cost is just adds on. And, you know, the proposed 2023 budgets, you know, reflects that. You know, I apologize that it's gone up, but it didn't go up all that much. So I appreciate all what the Board's done, looking at the budgets and working with us, and trying to get the budgets, you know, to where they are palatable for the town. Hopefully, we're in that spot.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Chief El Caddino?
Good evening. In regards to the fire department, unfortunately, everyone knows the cost of doing business has gone up. We tried keeping it as low as possible. I believe it was only 8%. The majority of that was fuel, which everybody's feeling. We also now are taking over some of the maintenance on the building. So when you look at the proposed fire department budget, you'll see that we decreased quite a bit to try to keep it as minimum as possible. Just as my brother in blue said, it's, unfortunately, we both operate, just like the road agent does, 24/7, 365. Our call volume has increased. It's in the annual report. Length of calls have increased from small calls to several hour calls. Again, there's not too much we could do. We cut it as much as we could, and thank the Board for your support.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Povero, road agent. Same as the police chief, fire chief. Matt, you opened up the meeting saying it. Operating costs have gone up drastically in the past 12, 18 months. It's rarely the reasoning for the increase for the Highway Department's budget. Really, pretty simple, really. And as you said, labor. Highway Department has one full-time employee. We needed to get his salary up to where it was competitive with the surrounding towns, which the Board did, thankfully, a number of weeks ago, to retain Ronnie, because he is a great town employee. He brings a lot to the table, and that was one of the other increases. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and the only other thing I'll mention, the Board mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, is, you know, in terms of when the tax impact is felt in December, we do have the ability to use some of the general fund within reason. You know, DRA will tell us we have to keep a certain percentage in there. So we do have the ability later this year to reduce the tax impact on the voters, if all works out right. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the Board, at least as constructed now, that we want to pursue doing that. And, you know, I was just talking to a neighbor recently, heating oil. He pre-bought at a certain rate, and he hasn't hit that rate yet. So, I mean, there's some light at the end of the tunnel, maybe, for some of these costs. And anything else from the Board you want to add?
Not only inflation costs and stuff, but if you look around this, this town is growing. I'm sure you, when you're driving down all these roads, and you're looking around, you see new houses going up. So when your police department and your fire department are talking about things needing to be done in the Highway Department, you're looking at the population increasing, which of course is going to increase their amount of work, what goes on, and all kinds of different avenues that they deal with, whether it's crime, whether it's traffic, whether it's the people in this town getting older in age and needing emergency services to save their lives, and all of that. And the same thing with Mike Povero, with the roads and trying to keep up with it. And we've been falling behind on that, and we're trying to-- we're not going to get ahead of it, but we're trying to at least stop falling any further behind, because that department was severely under-budgeted for quite some time, because their budget kept getting cut when it came this time. So just with the influx of everything, and I've said it before, it's been the perfect storm. With COVID, with Matt talked about it, with the different towns, we ran into trouble where we had to go up with salaries, because other towns were throwing bonuses out there and trying to steal our employees from us, and paying a better living cost for them. And if we didn't, then we wouldn't be able to retain the police department that we have, the fire department that we have, to be able to provide the services that everybody in this town needs, deserves, and is entitled to. You know, and so it's the whole picture. You have to look at it, and unfortunately, like Matt said, with inflation, it makes it, they hit even worse, so.
Charlie, did you want to add anything?
Nope, I had no comment.
No comment at all?
No.
Okay, all right.
One more question. The change that you just voted on--
Yeah.
Is that on this paper or not?
It should be under Highway Internet.
The Highway Internet number?
Yes.
I noticed.
I don't know what Mike had. Mike Conley, did you want to add something while Roger's looking up that number?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit on to what Slockman-Marchin was saying.
Yes.
Which--
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. So sorry, Mike, I think all we got out of that is you wanted to piggyback off of something Bob had said?
Yeah, he talks about this town growth. You know, when I look at some of the department heads that are in there tonight, you know, they're supporting also local towns, right? So it's not just our town, but because we do have mutual aid, we support other towns, and they support us in need. So when they talk about call volume up, time up, and we talk about the area growing, let's talk about the area, that means more traffic through our town. But there's just a lot more going on, and I don't-- and I think Slockman-Marchin hit it on the head. We need to catch up a little bit to where we were, to where we need to be. And I don't think we're going to catch up overnight in this year. But because of this, that's, when we look at these budgets, we have to realize what some of our department heads and our employees are up against, and we need to support that. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, so here's what we're going to do. The, and I can make the motion, we'll be looking for the Board's recommendation, which will go to press on the warrant, when you see it in the booth. So I'm going to move to recommend, and by the way, I have to do this roll call vote, right? So I'm going to move to recommend warrant article 2 as proposed or as written. Charlie, how do you vote?
No.
Do you have a second?
Do I? I do need a second.
Second.
It's not a poll thing. So segmented by Bob, thank you. So Charlie?
I'm a no.
Do you care to--
Nope.
--share? You don't care to share anything?
I just don't want to see people's taxes go up again.
Does anybody here want to see people's taxes go? I don't either, if we're voting on that. Any ideas, maybe, to change what we're proposing?
Well, we could go through it line by line and make some cuts.
Yeah. What cuts for what reason?
Well, I can see that there's $55,000 in here for rental-- more rental fees for the road agent. I think that's excessive. That's one. And I really don't believe we need another cruiser for the police department and another full-time police officer.
I just want to make a comment if I could.
Go ahead. He doesn't know I'm standing here.
To say that the police department doesn't need another officer, I would strongly argue against that. To have officers at night, on their own, without mutual aid, unless it comes from another town right now, which they could be standing in harm's way for 10, 15 minutes, we have to think about safety. I understand finances. I understand taxes. But at the end of the day, whether it's a firefighter, police officer, one of our own town employees on the road, especially the road agent, his personnel in harm's way, we have to lessen the risk of injury. So I get cutting taxes, but not when safety's involved. Each person needs to go home to their loved ones each and every day. And I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Mary Jo, were you coming to the mic? You're good. And I'll just, I'll put it out there. It's like the debates on network TV. Your name was induced. Or, Mike, do you want, do you want to touch it?
Do you want to leave it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
So Charlie brought up the increase of the rental rates for the town?
Yep.
I've said this before, I'll say it now. I'll probably say it again at some point in time. The Board, and we've gone through this a number of times, working up to the budget, the operating costs have gone up substantially. If by chance, it's decided that you want to decrease the rental rate budget, I won't lose five minutes of sleep over it, Charlie. Five minutes. Decrease it. At some point in time, that line item will get exhausted, and there'll be no equipment to go out to do the work for the town. And I'll give them your phone number.
I'll take it.
Perfect. We've got a solution.
I got a call. I'll take the call.
So if you want to decrease that line item, I'm fine with it. Truly. Truly. I mean, I've said this seven, eight years ago, and I'll say it again here now. Zero out the highway budget. Give everybody the tax credit back on their taxes, and have everybody maintain the roads in town themselves. There's a home run. Why don't we kick that around a little bit? Well, I know, because it sounds silly, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So if you want to decrease that budget, decrease the line item.
Look, there's four of us.
Okay.
They'll make this decision, not me. I'm just one vote. Just remember that.
No, you're one vote.
Yep.
And you were the same guy a year ago that said, "If I increase my highway budget, you'll be all for it."
If you had that $55,000 in with the $55,000 that you got for hot topping--
Uh-huh.
--I wouldn't be saying a word.
Okay. Then move it into hot topping. Move it into hot topping.
That'll be the decision of the Board, I guess.
Perfect. Then you guys work it out, and let me know what you come up with. I'm good with it.
All right, so Mary Jo, you--
What's on in front of you?
That's really high.
What's what in front of you cannot be changed here. Can be changed at deliberative session. You are voting on whether you recommend or don't recommend.
That's it.
So anybody wants to make any changes is done at deliberative session. Okay? That's all.
Thank you.
And this was all discussed before. All these budgets are always presented beforehand, correct?
Yeah. We've been looking at budgets since October. But, okay, so Charlie does not recommend Bob?
Yes.
Bob's a yes to recommend. Mike?
Yeah.
Matt will be a yes to recommend. So I would just leave it as, I recommend begrudgingly, right? Because I don't like to spend any more money. But like I talked about that electric bill, I didn't like that electric bill. I still paid the electric bill, because I like lights in my house. So number three, Charlie, do you want to read three for us?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,200 to be deposited into the Engineering and Renovation Capital Reserve Fund created in 2015. Said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance with no monies to be raised by taxation. This article would result in no increase in the amount of to be raised by taxes.
So this is the rental fees. We see this one every year. We have to do this in order to accept and then use the rental fees over at 8 Merrimack Road. So I'll make the motion, move to recommend this warrant article as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Segmented by Charlie, and we'll do the roll call vote, Charlie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Matt, a yes, so that's four recommending. Bob, do you want to do number four?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be deposited into the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund created in 2006. Said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance with no monies to be raised by taxation.
You just get that last bit on the second page. Oh, I'm sorry, you already read that. My bad. Okay? So I'm going to move--
Can I pipe in here? So this is something that you might consider dropping at this time. Even though it's coming from the unassigned fund balance, maybe this is one of those things we want to think about again and say, leave that money in there to reduce the taxes later. I'm just, it's just throwing that out there to you.
I'll, you know, I'll piggyback off of that. Another option would be for us to, we could recommend tonight, or not recommend for that matter, and change the amount at deliberative.
Yep, you could change-- Yep, you could change the amount.
Could change it to zero, could change it to 10,000.
Yeah.
So that's another option.
Yep, you could do that. Just give me one minute, I want to give you a little more information on that one.
So this is one of those things where this is a non-lapsing fund, right? So if we have a project to, you know, repaint or, you know, redo a, a part of a building, we can dip into this rather than going to a budget line item.
So right now, that budget, that fund, that trust fund has about 214,000 in there. So just so people understand, this is the money that we use for like the, the town storage, the septic system that broke, had to have that replaced. We've used it for some other things, I, and right off the top of my head, I can't remember. I think the ramp work that we had to have done. There was a couple of other things we did use it for this year. So right now, it's kind of healthy, 214, so maybe at the deliberative, you may want to reduce it a little bit.
Yeah, I would, I would say we've used it quite a bit lately and I'm surprised it's 214,000 actually. But, so, yeah, those are our.
Just, just wanted to put that in your head, you know, to think about what you might want to do with that one.
All right, so what I will do is I'll, I'll move for the board to recommend the Warren Article as written. Can somebody second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. So we'll start with Charlie.
First of all, would we be confusing the public at this point? If we, we all agree to this, right? Would we be confusing the public thinking, and then turn around and say, okay, we want to drop that to 10,000?
Well, we can re-vote to recommend at the deliberative, correct? So we could, if, let's say we're four to zero tonight to recommend, or I'm sorry, against, zero to four tonight, and then we dropped it, you know, to $10,000 at the deliberative, we could re-vote. And then we could, you know what I'm saying?
And then support it.
So then you're going to vote to not recommend?
Well, I, I just made a move to recommend.
Okay.
So the votes will be whatever they are tonight, so.
Okay.
Want me to come back, Charlie?
I'm, I'm a yes.
You're a yes. Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And I'll be a yes.
So that's a move to recommend?
Move to recommend. Yeah, that was a yes vote. But put a little asterisk next to that.
Yeah.
All right, so, Mike, I'm, I'm assuming you don't have these in front of you, Mike?
I, I've got it pulled up on my, my phone here.
Do you, would you, do you want me to just read them and not? In other words, should we skip you because you're not, you don't have it good enough to see to read out loud?
Yeah, you can, yeah, skip me so there's no issues.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to read number five, which is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the police chief, the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into the police cruisers and equipment capital reserve fund created in 2021. This article would result in an estimated .038 increase per 1,000, excuse me, of assessed value to be raised by taxes. So this. Chief, do you want to say?
Evening, Board, Mike Jewett, Police Chief. That, that want article, you said it's been, it's been running for a few years. The purpose of that is if we have a cargo down, we have the money to repair it, depending on what time of year it is, depending on how much money I have in the budget for maintenance. I'm not going to beat a dead horse up here and tell you that, you know, we do have cars that are well aged that really shouldn't be frontline patrol cars. They're okay for a secondary or third, but we don't know what's going to happen. The other thing, that money, you know, eventually could be used for is if we had to buy a car. You know, there's different things that we can do with it. We've already said it a million times tonight that the cost of everything is going up. Radios are going up, the equipment that we need is going up. You know, the cars have more equipment in them than you think they do because we need stuff for all the different situations that we get into. You know, we do have an aging fleet and they do need to be updated, so that helps out with the older ones. We've got a couple that have well over 100,000 miles on them. 100,000 miles to anyone standing in here, not a big deal. I have 230,000 miles on my truck, but I can tell you, those cruisers run the entire shift. The idling hours are a lot worse than the actual driving mileage. I'd rather, you know, 230,000 miles on a Chevy pickup truck's not bad, it's barely broken in. But when you have tens of thousands of hours on a car idling on the side of the road, that's not really good for the car itself, and that's why these get beat pretty bad and quickly. So that, that line item, you know, has, has a purpose, and hopefully we can continue with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to make the motion, move to recommend Warren Article Five as written. If somebody could second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Charlie, do you recommend?
Yes, I'm gonna.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Am I the last mic? We can come.
Yes.
There he is. And I'm a yes, so we have four to recommend.
So we just need to do one little housekeeping?
Sure.
So Selectman Conley, are you alone in the room?
I am.
Thank you. What time did you join the meeting?
The first one or the second one?
Both, actually. Yeah. What, what time for the first one?
The first one, yeah, the first one, I was 15 minutes past, and I never disconnected from the meeting, so I've been here the whole time for the second one.
Okay, so 6:15 you joined the meeting, and you've been alone all that time?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So he had a nice meeting by himself there for a while, so. So was.
Number six.
Six, was that Charlie for six?
Yep. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the fire chief, the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into the fire apparatus and equipment slash refurbishment fund, capital reserve fund created in 2005 and amended in 2011. This article would result in an estimated .038 increase per 1,000 assessed value to raise by the taxpayers.
Chief, did you, anything to add for this one?
Good evening. As Charlie read, that Warren Article's been proposed for almost 20 years now. It has failed several times. The amount that's left in that capital reserve for major repairs and replacement, I think is only about 40 something thousand dollars. Again, due to the economy, normally it's been 50,000. Since before I took office, we dropped it down to 25 to hopefully at least start slowly building the account while the economy is bad.
Thank you. So what I will do is I'll make the motion to recommend Warren Article Seven or Six as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Charlie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Matt's a yes, so that's four to recommend. Number seven would be you, Bob, right?
To see if the town will vote to dissolve the expendable trust fund established in 2009 known as Emergency Ops Center, established for the continuation of town services during an emergency. If approved, any monies in said expendable trust fund presently in the amount of $8,417,025 plus any accumulated interest to date of withdrawal shall lapse into the town's general fund. This article is contingent upon the town meeting's approval of Article Eight, and if the town meeting does not approve Article Eight, this article shall be null and void.
Okay. And this is, Trish, this is basically housekeeping, right? To get us, get us to number eight, which we'll go into detail in a minute. So I would like to move to approve or recommend this Warren Article as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. So roll call, Charlie?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Matt's a yes, so that is four to recommend, Article Number Seven. So as I come up in the batting order, I have Article Eight to read, which is the longest one, so. All right, here we go. Let me take a deep breath on this one. Article Eight reads, "To see if the town will vote to establish an emergency management revolving fund pursuant to RSA 3195-H for the purpose of providing and maintaining government services during emergencies as deemed appropriate by the government body. Further, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town to deposit into the revolving fund all or any part of the revenues from state or federal grants, excuse me, any other state or federal funding program, or from any other sources as approved by the legislative body for deposit into the revolving fund. Further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,417,025 to be deposited in, in the revolving fund, said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance and constituting the anticipated final balance of the Emergency Operations Center Expendable Trust Fund. The money in the revolving fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund unassigned fund balance. The Board of Selectmen shall be the agents to expend from the revolving fund. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the Board of Selectmen, and no further approval of the legislative body shall be necessary to expend. The monies in the revolving fund may be expended for maintaining government services, including but not limited to payroll, equipment, supplies, maintenance and repairs, utilities and fuel. This article is contingent upon the town meeting's approval of the previous Article Seven, and if the town meeting does not approve Article Seven, this article shall be null and void. This proposed article results in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes, period." So Trish, if you want to give us that one.
So just before Trish speaks, just so everybody knows, this was written basically by the attorney.
Yep.
So this is, everything had to be that specific.
So the reason that, that these have come before you, first of all, the expendable trust fund that we established in 2009 was after the ice storm, you'll all remember. And, and Roger has already brought it up. You know, our payroll in the EOC is, you know, like next to almost nothing. And in order to supplement services to our town, this Article Eight would give us the grant monies that I've been writing, and so far, I want to say it's 153,000 just that could go in this fund, which could pay us only during an emergency, so we can't use it if there's not an emergency. But as an example, right now, I, there's no, it's a federal emergency and the feds do not pay payroll for us. So the only way that I could get paid, if we approved this, is because we're in an emergency, the payroll could come out of here. If there is a state emergency and it's declared an emergency by the governor, then they pay us a portion. It could be 75%. Once in the last couple of years, during, during the governor's state gophers that he was doing, we got 90%. But typically, we have very limited money for payroll. Right now, and I think I already said it too during my EOC report, I have to do an analysis with the police, the fire and the road agent on the Christmas weekend storm. We have no money to pay me to do that. This, because it's an emergency, this money actually could pay me. So it's crucial that Number Seven, we vote to dissolve it, and then that money from Seven be deposited into Eight, which would keep us going. During an emergency, you know, some of us, we went door to door during, like the ice storm, we made sure if we delivered water, the police and the fire and the road crew, even the plow drivers helped us get to the community, and this money would actually have offset their budgets. Without it, they take, we all take the brunt of it in our budget. So it's crucial that we get this approved as written. And yes, DRA, we've tried to do this a few times. When COVID first started, the EMD and I, we actually thought that we could get paid from that expendable trust fund, and we were told, no, you can't get it from that. We needed to create this account in order to get to accomplish what we needed to. So I know it's confusing, but if anyone doesn't understand it, feel free to call me. You can reach me at the EOC. My cell phone's posted everywhere. It's really important that this passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Thank you. All right, so, so I would like to move to recommend Warren Article Eight as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's four to recommend. So I think it's on to Charlie now for number nine.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,363 for the following community services. Area home care and family services, 3,800. Child advocacy center, 2,000. Drugs are dangers, 2,500. Haven, 3,050. New Hampshire SPCA, 750. Rockingham County Community Action, 5,000. Rockingham Nutrition on Wheels, 2,927. Rockingham County Nutrition Meals on Wheels Transportation, 700. South Rock Coalition for Healthy Youth, 4,936. Vic Gary Center, 2,700. Waypoint, 2,000. Total, 30,363. This article results in an estimated .047 increase per 1,000 assessed value to raise taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Raised by taxes.
So, so the, I'll, I'll say this one, Chief, because I've heard you say it for like five years. Oh, you do, okay. But while the chief's wagging up there, these are services you may not know, people who need these services, but this is kind of like the behind the curtain stuff. They get used all the time, so Chief, go ahead.
Evening, Board, Mike Jewett, Police Chief. As Selectman Melvin read through that list, my head kind of spun a little bit with the numbers. I can tell you probably wholeheartedly, we've already exhausted what a couple of those line items are. We've had eight to 10 cases in the last two weeks with some of those services. We have been absolutely inundated the last two weeks with cases coming in, so, I mean, for us, you know, we're happy to have the services for the public. You know, we've already, I think we've tripled the number on one of the particular ones that we did from last year already, and we're not even halfway through the month. So these services are definitely well needed.
Yeah, and I think I've heard you say before too, if for some reason this Warren Article didn't pass, then we'd be looking for the money somewhere else because it, we can't turn.
Yeah, some of that stuff is mandated to help and do different things, and it, it's tough. I mean, it's social services to help out the public. You know, as someone just reminded me, you know, it would have been nice if we could have got that into the budget this year rather than a, a warrant article. Again, just so we don't have to keep going over these every year, because they're services we use on an annual basis.
Yeah, that was discussed. There was a reason why we could not capture it in the budget. By the time we have the deliberative, I'll have the answer. It was because we mentioned that one before. So I'm going to move to recommend this Warren Article, or Warren Article Nine as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So four to recommend. Ten would be yours, Bob?
To see if the town will vote to raise
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the Recreation Commission the sum of $4,500 for the recreational programs and trips for Newton senior citizens. This article would result, excuse me, in an estimated .007 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
Okay. I'm here from the Recreation. Roger, go ahead.
I did a little bit of research.
Yeah.
This program has been around forever.
Yeah.
And I only could go back to 2009. Fourteen years ago, we were appropriating $5,000 to this program.
Really?
Yes. And the, I really think it is, the program, considering increased costs and also the increased percentage of senior citizens who are now living in town, that this program is grossly underfunded. So if you can't change the number tonight, at the deliberative session, I was going to at least suggest that they go to 5,000.
Okay.
The other thing that on this, and I know that, again, at deliberative, they always talk about, well, this really should go into the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And, well, I got this idea from what, at the hockey, people at the school a couple of years ago, had an article like this, and they added a sentence to it. And I paraphrase. "If this article is approved by the voters, this program will be included in subsequent operating budgets," which would mean that then it would get to be in the default. Anyway, because that's always the idea of, we have to keep it separate because otherwise. But if you added that sentence to the warrant, you could then, it would then be a part of next year's, if it got approved this year, next year it would be part of the default.
Yeah, I will tell you, and this will be the same for 11 as well.
Yes.
Is the Recreation Commission this year talked about, why don't we just put this in our proposed budget? And nobody's a mind reader, and nobody has a crystal ball, but the reason we did not do that is we were concerned that if we were seeing the budgets every week, and the budgets were going up because we just talked about salary, fuel costs, would this get lost?
Right. And I agree that for this year, it's good not to put it in the operating budget.
Yeah.
But if you add this sentence to it, then it would, for next year, it would be in the default. So it would be locked in.
Yeah. So that's an interesting, if you don't, I'm going to assign Diana up for something. If you don't mind sharing that language with Diane, when we do the DRA review, maybe they can just give us their opinion.
Yeah, that's sort of why I'm here tonight, is I wanted to get.
This is the only reason you're here?
I've been doing all this other talking. But this is the real thing, and I wanted you to get, you know, official.
Yeah, makes sense.
Legal thing that, if you put that sentence in or something like that, that it would be in the default.
Yeah, we should, we should get that talked about. I kind of like that. Thank you. All right. I'm going to move to recommend this Warren article 10 as written. Anyone want?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Excuse me. Discussion, no discussion. Charlie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So moving on to 11.
No, 10.
We just did 10. Yeah, that was 10. Who just, who just read 10?
You're on 11.
We're moving on to 11. Who's 11? Charlie?
You.
Me? All right.
Here we go. You just did that one. So it's your turn.
You did that.
And you did that?
And now he's on 11.
Okay, Matt's on 11.
At least we can agree on that. So 11, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the Recreation Commission the sum of, excuse me, $25,920 for the purpose of hiring four part-time lifeguards and one part-time lifeguard supervisor, performing candidate searches and training, and purchasing necessary safety equipment. The lifeguards will oversee the safety of all swimmers at the town beach between May 2023 and September 2023. This article would result in an estimated .04 increase per 1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes." So as I said with Roger, as we put this in there, because this is one of those things that a lot of people, I always say, a lot of people in town don't even know we have a town beach. But to a lot of people in town, this is a very important thing, and then they, they can vote and get their friends to vote and everything. This has been a very successful warrant article. In the past, we have expanded it to make sure we're capturing all costs, and this is reflective of what we spent last year. And same old story, attrition, we're probably going to lose all our lifeguards. They're going to matriculate probably to full-time jobs, graduating from college and stuff. So we're going to have to get started very early to recruit new ones. So I'm going to make a motion to recommend the Warren article number 11 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Matt's to recommend. So with 12, we're moving on to Charlie.
To see if the town will vote as proposed by the Board of Selectmen to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be paid towards a 2023 solid waste disposal budget as an offset of the recycling disposal cost, and to authorize the withdrawal of $60,000 from the Transfer Station Recycling Special Revenue Fund created in 2003 for this purpose. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Okay. This is one we see quite a bit, very necessary for the business we do down there at the transfer station, which most people use quite a bit. Anybody want to add anything else to this? No?
No.
So I'm going to move to recommend Warren article number 12 as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call Charlie.
Yes.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So number 13 is Bob, right?
To see if the town will vote as proposed by the Board of Selectmen to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of holding a hazardous waste day for Newton residents only. Said monies to come from the transfer station's recycling special revenue fund created in 2003 with no monies to come from taxation. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
All right. Very popular day in Newton, hazardous waste day. Lines around the corner and all that good stuff. So I'm going to move to recommend Warren article 13 as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Charlie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt is an aye to recommend. So four to recommend. So I get 14, which is, "To see if the town will vote to adopt an ordinance defining and regulating conflict of interest for local officers and employees, whether elected or appointed, per the provisions of RSA 31-39, a said ordinance being titled 'The Town of Newton Ethics Standards.' A copy of the Town of Newton Ethics Standards is available at the Town Hall offices. Majority vote would be required on voting day." So this would be, this will be available in the Town Hall and also PDF online, right? Part of our voting guide and all that stuff. Basically, what this is, it was a recommendation by Town Council when reviewing our standard policies and ordinances. We did not have this. This is something that most towns are, either already have or are in the process of doing this. And the recommendation from Town Council was to make this a majority vote of the voting body. So that is the reason for number 14. So make sure that you get an opportunity to review that before you cast your vote on the day of. Okay, so I'm going to move to recommend 14 as written. Seconded by Charlie. Take a vote, Charlie. How do you vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob's an aye. Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So we have four to recommend, 14. I think we're back over to Charlie for 15.
Shall the town of Newton vote in accordance with RSA 72:27-A to re-adopt the provisions of RSA 72:28-2, known as the Optional Veterans Tax Credit, in the amount of $750 per year? If adopted, the following individuals will be eligible for Veterans Tax Credit. A, every resident of this state who serves not less than 90 days in active service in the Armed Forces of the United States in any qualifying war or armed conflict listed RSA 72:28-5, and was honorably discharged, or an officer honorably separated from the service, or the spouse of surviving spouse of such resident. B, every resident of this state who was terminated from the Armed Forces because of service-connected disabilities, or the surviving spouse of such resident. And C, surviving spouse of any resident who suffered a service-connected death. The tax credit shall replace and shall not be in addition to standard veterans' tax credits, and shall be subtracted in accordance with RSA 72:28-3.
So this is, we've seen this one before, right? This is, I believe, a new definition of this article in terms of, did you want to talk to it, Mary Jo?
I'm going to bring this up again at deliberative session, but for anybody that's listening to explain this. We did adopt this optional tax credit a few years ago to raise it to $750. The state is rewriting this to add these other people to actually get in on this. It's $750 that's deducted from your tax bill. It's not a lot of money. They deserve more, but this is what, that's the maximum. However, to add these people, to add the additional benefactors, you have to re-adopt the Optional Veterans Tax Credit. If it does not get re-adopted, if it doesn't pass, we go back to the $25 that was the base, the bare minimum.
Really?
I want that out there now, and I will address it again at deliberative session.
Yeah. So this is very important. Okay, so I am going to move to recommend as written. Warren article 15, and Bob's already seconding me, which is great. So let's go around. Charlie?
I'm a yes.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So we have four to recommend. Number 16 is.
To see if the town will vote the sum of $69,350.17 for the purpose of funding the position of the Newton School Resource Officer. Said appropriations is to be funded by the Sanborn Regional School District and will be deposited into the salary, full-time offices, 4210204 Police Department Budget for that purpose. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Chief, did you want to talk to them? I think it's the most self-explanatory article probably we have this year, but.
Evening, Board. Mike Jewett, Police Chief. Basically, that warrant article, what it's doing is it's allowing us to put a check that we're receiving from the school district into an account in order to pay the school resource officer. The town's already accepted two checks this year. I don't know if they're in limbo or if they've been put somewhere, or are we waiting to put them into this?
I think, well, this would be the, what we've gotten so far, and it doesn't reflect a full working year, right? Because he started last January. So if, you know, next year would be the full amount of his pay, this is reflective of that percentage.
Moving a check from one to another to pay.
Exactly. So it's banking, essentially.
Yep.
All right. So I'm going to move to recommend the Warren article number 16 as written.
Second.
Or seconded by Bob. Charlie?
I'm a no.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So move, so that is three to recommend, one not to recommend. 17 is over to me, right?
Now it's Bob.
No, Bob just read that.
Matt's up. When in doubt, I get the longest ones, is really what it comes down to. 17, "To see if the town will vote as proposed by the Board of Selectmen to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35-1, to be known as the Town Cisterns and Fire Ponds Capital Reserve Fund, for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, and improving or replacing the town cisterns and fire ponds, to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be placed in the fund, and to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from such fund. Said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes." Excuse me. Chief, do you want to just give a general overview? This is a sorely needed fund that we have never had, right?
Good evening. And talking to some of our senior members and with the road agent, the town cisterns and dry hydrants haven't been serviced. Nobody has a date the last time they were serviced. We do know that there's one cistern, I will not tell you the neighborhood, so stop panicking, that we know is leaking. There are several that need to be serviced. The fire pond would strongly recommend this is a safety issue. We don't have municipal water for those that are moving into, what's your, those that are moving into town from other communities that have municipal water. That's our water supply. It's those ponds, cisterns, and tankers.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to move to recommend Warren article 17 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All right. Charlie?
Yes.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so four to recommend. So number 19?
18.
18? I was trying to move us along. 18, Charlie, do you want to read that one?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,130.25 to be deposited into the Skate Park Expendable Trust Fund created in 2021. Said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance, the amount of $5,130.25. And the unassigned fund balance represents donations raised by Paul Murray through various events and deposited into the town's general fund, but which would restrict for the purpose of which the fund was created. This proposal, article, would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Yeah, I would just say with this one, I think this is second or third year we've been seeing this. You know, obviously, it's, Mary Jo just gave me the number two. Second year we saw this one. I, you know, I really give them, Paul Murray and his, his group, a lot of credit, because this is something very niche, I think, for people in town, but very important. But, you know, we like to help those who help themselves, right? So they go out, they have these fundraisers, and so that check is sitting in the general fund. We want to put it in where it can be used for, for this, so.
Skate Park.
For the skate park project when that comes to a reality. So I'm going to recommend, or move to recommend, oh, Roger's coming.
Second.
You didn't know what I'm recommending yet.
Could the Expendable Trust Fund be amended so that it could receive donations? Is that a possibility?
I don't know.
No.
No?
Nope, not an Expendable Trust Fund. It would have to be a revolving fund. That's why we're getting rid of the EMD one.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good question. So I'm going to move to recommend 18 as written. Oh, Joe's coming. You seconded me.
Yes.
I have a question just for general purposes, and it's not this particular or our article in particular, but whenever we say to take the money that's been in the fund already, where does the interest go that's accumulated on that money?
I think it's, does it stay in the revolving fund?
Is that by law?
Yeah, that's, Jim's shaking his head, I believe.
I was just unsure of that. Because every time.
No, that's a good question.
To withdraw money out of that fund, we say it's accumulated.
Right, exactly, right, yeah.
Like, yeah, we do with the other.
Right.
So you're talking about the fund, the money right now that we collected as a donor?
So you're talking about the fund, the money right now that we collected as a donation is in the general unassigned fund balance? It's, the interest is in there?
Yeah, but why can't we get the interest?
How are you going to, for that amount, you're probably looking at, what, 10 cents?
In any event, it's the other way. Whenever we would.
Get up, if you're going to. Step to the mic.
Draw. We say plus accumulated interest, so why can't we do it in reverse? I'm just, just, I don't know why it's done that way, I'm just asking a question.
Never thought of it that way, but it's, remember that parking lot thing I invented?
Yeah. Good luck.
That's in the parking lot, right there, so. That's, that's, we'll get an answer at some point, not tonight, so. See, I told you it'd be worthwhile. So I moved to recommend, Bob seconded, so Charlie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's four to recommend. So I think it's, is it Bob now? Yeah, for 19.
By petition of 25 or more eligible voters of the Town of Newton to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 to support a lake house program at the Newton Town Boat Ramp for the 2023 summer season. The lake house program is a collaborative effort between New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, New Hampshire Lakes, and local lake associations. It trains and employs individuals to provide courtesy boat inspections to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive plants, such as milfoil, from one lake to another, thereby protecting public lakes' uses such as swimming, fishing, and boating. This article would result in an estimated .003 increase per $1,000 assessed value to be raised by taxes.
Do you want to read that little paragraph?
In 2021, County Pond Lake Association, CPLA short, of Newton organized a lake house program that provided over 509 hours of inspection time at the Newton Town Boat Ramp. In 2022, the CPLA plans to expand that to 565 hours of inspection time, with a total cost of $5,300. Funding from this program will come from town support via this warrant article, a matching New Hampshire Lakes grant, and CPLA members' donations. I think they might have their years wrong there.
Yeah, it looks like it. But at any rate, it's a good program. Most people, unless you're involved with the lake, you probably don't know about it, but it's a good program. That invasive species, is it powwow pond? That is the big problem. So it's trying to keep us from being powwow pond. So I am going to make a motion to recommend this warrant Article number 19 as written. Anybody want a second? Seconded by Charlie. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob's an aye. Mike?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's four to recommend. So we're almost there, we only have 20 more to go. Just kidding, two more to go. So number 20 will be me. 20, by petition of 25 or more eligible voters of the Town of Newton, New Hampshire, we hereby show request that the Town of Newton, New Hampshire shall not allow any type of workforce housing till the Town of Newton, New Hampshire has municipal water and municipal septic throughout the complete town. This proposed article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. Charlie, did you want to talk to this one? It was your petition, right?
Yeah, right, it's, it's my official one, yeah. Yeah. What this basically does, it sets it up so that you can't turn around and build workforce housing in Town of Newton until such time as we have town municipal and town water. Now, search. And basically, the governor is passing out $100 million to developers to build workforce housing. This would eliminate them from getting the money, so they won't build a new one. We can't sustain that. We have, half the town goes dry in the, in the winter, I mean, the summertime on water. There's wells that are over 1,200, 1,400 feet deep in this town. I don't think we should put the burden on the community.
Diane, this was part of the, the draft that legal looked at, right?
Well, it's a petition article, I don't think he can change it.
Right, I know, but sometimes I, I feel better if they've reviewed them, but at any rate.
Eventually, it'll get reviewed over again by DRA, especially actors.
Yeah, well, that's, so we'll go with that, yeah. So, any questions? So I'm going to move to recommend warrant Article 20 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Let's go, Charlie?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob's an aye. Mike?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's four to recommend. So the last one.
My petition.
Bob, you, you get to do the last one.
I do the last one.
You want to do the last one? Charlie wants to do the last one.
You did that one, then it was supposed to be my turn. That's why I'm.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
By petition of 25 or more eligible voters of the Town of Newton to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be deposited into the Skateboard Park Expendable Trust Fund, created in 2021 for the purpose of repairing, constructing, and reconstructing and maintaining the skateboard park located at Greeny Park. This article would result in an estimated XX increase per thousand assessed value to be raised by taxes. It didn't give an amount.
What was it?
It was .015.
Okay. Okay, 015, which will be what's on the warrant. Okay, so that is more in regards to the skateboard park. It's kind of asking the voters to, to share in some of the costs.
Right.
Any, okay, so I'm going to move to recommend warrant Article 21 as written. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Matt a yes, so we're going to have four to recommend this article. So it then says, given under our hands and sealed this 16th day of January, is it still the 16th of January? It is.
For a couple more hours.
In the year of our Lord 2023, and the board will sign, and then we will present this as part of the deliberative on February 4th. Any other issues, comments, before we adjourn the public hearing? Okay, so I thank a lot of people stuck around a long time, and I've said it before, a lot of people put a lot of work, months and months of work, into these warrant, this budget and warrant articles, so we appreciate that. So I'm going to adjourn the public hearing at 8:18 PM, and we will see you guys on February 4th. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good job.
Recording stopped.